From Plinkton, it's related to the very complex reduction.
Followed by Stephen Wroczynski, followed by Silvio Delangelo.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. My name is Andrew Littman. I had the privilege to serve as chair of the council's police oversight task force. Task force completed its work last week and has submitted its final report and recommendations, which are being introduced tonight as Bill OC-14-2. I would like to thank the council for allowing me to serve on this very important task force. Having a well-functioning and respected civilian police oversight process is vital to the safety and security of our community. Only with trust and cooperation between the civilian population and the police is our community truly safe. The task force is recommending significant and sweeping changes to Albuquerque's current civilian police oversight system, including the creation of a new civilian police oversight agency with greater independence and clearly defined advanced training for its civilian members. This new agency, if implemented, will have greater authority and expanded powers and will administer its own budget and staff. As the former chair of the task force, I hope and recommend that the city council, through the Finance and Government Operations Committee, FGO, to which Bill OC-14-2 will be referred, will conduct a study session for the full city council, followed by public meetings or town halls to explain the recommendations of the task force. Thank you, councilors Bardunio and Winter, for sponsoring a resolution creating the Police Oversight Task Force. Thank you, President Sanchez, and councilors, for allowing me to serve our community as task force chair. Thank you.
Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Ms. President. I just want to say to all the members how much time and effort is very much appreciated. I know it wasn't always an easy going, but I appreciate very much all of your hard work.
Thank you. Counselor Bardunio.
Mr. Littman, I also want to add to what Councilor Winter said. Not only was the work hard, but I think it was diligent. It was sometimes, I'm sure, if not heated, there were some discussions that were hard to get over. But as a group, and I've seen some of the members here tonight, as a group, you just were able to tackle the issue, stay on task, and do work that I think everyone should be able to model, you know, any kind of committee or task force after. So, thank you for that.
Thank you very much. It was a difficult and challenging task, and I will be calling a study session for this council to meet on the recommendations by the committee. Thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Stephen Wroczynski.
Council President Sanchez, members of the city council, Stephen Wroczynski, who live up in northeast heights. And I just have three quick items for you. One is, I did write at the TCC and the Council of Governments with regards to the North diversion channel road and its need for the city of Albuquerque in light of the fact that this major metropolitan employment center does not have adequate transit or alternative means of transportation to get into it, and yet they're calling congestion for what appears to be about a $10 million expenditure for the city. I ask that you take a real good, hard look at it, particularly extending Washington northbound, condemning a little piece of property there so that the roadway can connect up into the Journal Center. A little bit less expensive, I think. Second item, as an avid bicyclist and commuter in the city using both public transit and bicycling, I'm appalled that, again, between Osuna and San Antonio along the Pan American Freeway northbound, they are rebuilding that whole section with no trail segment to connect up the two portions. I can't understand why continually the Transportation Department manages to not get this type of work done when they're building brand-new roadway. They're supposed to be considering these types of facilities as they go along, rather than trying to piecemeal it later. On the third item, with regards to R13-240, council president has a copy of the letter that I sent to him back in, I believe, around January 20th, with regards to the Resolution 13-240. I ask that it include the Bosque Action Plan policies eight through 16 incorporating it by reference as well, as well as a full acknowledgment and need to do a directive from the patto graphic community.
Thank you. Counselor Ben.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out, you probably may be aware of this, but with regard to your second item and the bicycle connectivity up in that area, the Sayo project itself, they've done some discussion about what the design looks like as far as getting across I-25 at that point. And I know that our federal delegation, all three local members of our federal delegation have had their staff attending meetings with the DOT, and of course, the city's aware of these issues as well. But in general, I really agree with you, and I think we need to expect more of the state department transportation along these lines. But I encourage you to communicate your concerns to those federal representatives as well.
Council President, if I may. That's fine. I did meet with federal highway administration officials prior to the adoption of the design bill contract, as well as the state DOT sent letters over to the secretary, cabinet secretary, as well as meeting with the design bill team. I think that what council could have done with regards to the Great Streets program and allotting the $2 million of additional money is actually earmarked for completion of the bike bridge, which should have been done in the first place, because, again, this employment center has 11% of all of the employment in the city of Albuquerque, and yet you do not have strong bicycle pedestrian connectivity, yet you have thousands of households immediately within side of a mile and a half to two miles, and they can't get there. Thank you.
Understood. There was part of the reason there wasn't stronger language put in that tip amendment that was passed by the council at the last meeting was there is, we were cautioned that we can't really direct state DOT, honestly. And so, I think it's more, that's why I'm emphasizing that we need public outcry, and certainly, I think, when our federal delegation and those folks call for a meeting, a meeting itself, it cried away. So, we need all pull together, but I agree with you.
Design bill.
Thank you. Next speaker is Silvio Delangelo, followed by Kathy Neminski, followed by Ralph Arianas, followed by Mike Gomez. Your name is Ben Colick. Please come to the platform. It'll be hard to speak.
Mr. President, councilors, I was surprised, but not surprised, that there was not even one more question of APD tonight. You know, they violated the APD, they ignore it, but apparently that's unimportant to you. And before I get into the body of it, you know, I guess if you talk about frivolous lawsuits, I guess every lawsuit that victims of APD file can be termed frivolous. So, I urge you to give relief to those who filed the lawsuit. You know, I will repeat with some of my emails, they're pretty caustic. This is a great deal of frustration right now. You know, Vincent Wood, a veteran, was killed in early July. I've asked to see the recordings, no recordings. Brian Pittsler shot a man in the back, no recordings. You know, we've got Contract Section 20 of the contract that you want to keep in, it keeps these officers' names secret. You know, Andrew Littman talked about the report. There's a lot of good people who worked on the task force. You've got 238-page report. If you go through it, most of it makes no sense. I mean, it's articles and stuff like that. If one wants to discourage somebody from reading it, that's a good 230 pages that accomplishes that. You know, I feel sorry for the good people who've served. You know, Stephanie Lopez will come up and saying the only thing that's needed is training. You know, the real thing is you, the task force avoided a lot of the issues, and any good issues that have passed the mayor's going to veto, and he's expecting you don't sustain that. You know, we are actually waiting for DOJ report, because you folks do not predispose to do anything about it. You don't care. You really don't care. You know, and I'll continue to write letters, I'll send them to the world, including the DOJ, and maybe somebody will get your attention, but you're not doing your jobs. You really aren't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kathy Neminski.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Neminski. Let's be, I don't want something with broken record. We all tire of APD issue. Let's be director of your attention. How many of you of us knows what that we played yesterday, last game, where all of you get together and listen and watch? That's what? Taco Bowl, Super Bowl. Now, let's go to January 21st, what I witnessed. Between 3:00 and 3:15, sitting in the car, I noticed police activities on front of me. That time, I could see it, everyone, I saw two police officers, that was Dennis Torres next to that, inside the driveway, and outside the driveway, next to the curb, Lucero. I could see it. What's going on? Lucero, I saw him at half, I'm sorry, Dennis Torres, I saw halfway because car was blocking. And then Lucero was next to the curb, and I think I saw movement on the ground. And a few minutes later, I noticed Lucero stopped kicking. That was when somebody was on the ground. That time, I jumped from my car, and kept yelling, "Don't you do that." Stopped. And some other word, stopped kicking. He stopped. I went around after a while. I noticed this person was young woman, had a car. Thanks for plugging my businesses. Thank you for your time. City businesses.
Next speaker, Ralph Arianas, followed by Mike Gomez, followed by Rodrigo Cora.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council. My name is Ralph Arianas. I'm the state director of Mexico LULAC. I'm also on the National LULAC Board of Directors, and I'm chairman of the Hispanic Roundtable in Mexico, and I'm also a member of the Police Oversight Task Force. I want to thank each and every one of you, and the mayor, Mayor Berry, for appointing me and others to serve on the Police Oversight Task Force. We all know that oftentimes, there are many people who criticize the process, but very few are willing to volunteer a great deal of their time to bring forward solutions to problems. The members of the Police Oversight Task Force did a great job of developing a plan and a set of recommendations that we will address and the many shortcomings of the current system. While it may not be a perfect product, we believe it is a strong product and something that will characterize, that I would characterize as a work in process. We urge you to vote unanimously in the affirmative and that the mayor will sign for approval of these proposed changes, and I believe this task force should be kept on board as an evaluation/ advisory committee or a task force to better improve the process as we move forward with this plan. As volunteers, we put in a lot of time and effort into this in the hope that we have improved this process. My next area of comment to you is to urge all of you and the mayor not to pursue attorney fees in the case of Baca versus Berry. This lawsuit had tremendous merit, as it concerned the Hispanic community and as a community of interest. All too often, and over the course of history, the Hispanic community and the Native American community, the African American community, and other groups voices via the voting and political process have been denied via frivolous practices and downright voter fraud. That is why we have the Voting Rights Act of 1964 and '65, because too many minorities and people of color were denied the rights, thereby minimizing our votes and political process. There's a long history of gerrymandering in our nation, and the Hispanic community stood as a community of interest, and we vote, we request that you vote against pursuing these attorney fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Ms. President. Ralph Arianas. I just want to thank you personally for serving on the committee. I think that everybody did a fabulous job, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. One, two. Any questions?
I also want to say thank you also for your work on LULAC. You do a great job for that organization. Really appreciate all you've done for LULAC.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there any questions on the lawsuit?
That'll be discussed during the bill, so hopefully you'll stick around.
Thank you for your time and the question. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Mike Gomez.
Counselors, we've got $24 million in counting of taxpayer dollars being spent on lawsuits because of APD. Then we have the poor police force who just asks for a little bit of a raise, and, you know, they don't get it, they deny what is supposedly a good offer, which is the best thing that they could have done. You have someone here who gets $33,000 raise. You have someone who quits the police force, the mayor's heir apparent for chief of police, who bails because he doesn't want to be here. All right? And of course, they find out, wow, we should raise it $35,000 to give more money for a police chief, which is pretty smart. But what happens to the officers that are here already? Nothing. They deserve something. And I don't know what your true functions are here on the council, but hopefully, one of them is human rights, is to do the right thing for the people, the firefighters, the police, who are out there all the time fighting the elements and trying to help our citizens. They're the ones that need a raise, definitely. Another thing is $2.6 million, I think I heard, that the mayor wants to put more into the lawsuit funds. I mean, it's terrible. You should have stopped this years ago. We were coming up here and asking you and telling you there was a problem. You didn't listen. And now, it's all coming, coming to a head, and it's more coming, more bad publicity, more money that's going to be paid out. And everyone who was here three years ago, you could have stopped it, but you didn't. So, now's the time to have some courage and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Next speaker, Rodrigo Cora, followed by Kathy Garcia, followed by Joe Hastings. Welcome.
Actually, you get two for the price of one this evening. My name is Kathy Garcia, and I'm a teacher at La Academia de Esperanza.
And we thank the city council and Mayor Berry's office for considering our request. Finally, your support helps Explore provide science learning experiences across the city, not only in our building, but at schools and community centers across the city, across the county. We also provide over 5,000 no-cost family memberships through schools, community centers, and city agencies via the Albuquerque Urban Housing Authority. It's an important program. We're at about 5,000 member families, and we hope to get to about 10,000 in the next year. Thank you again for your ongoing support. Please come by Explore and see us.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ian Madison, followed by Nora Anaya, followed by Anita Cordova, followed by Marcia Lueden.
Mr. President and councilors, I'm Ian Madison. I'm the chair of the Greater Albuquerque Recreational Trails Committee, and I speak on behalf of the committee as well as myself. I want to put a plea for action for greater safety on our trails, what we frequently, somewhat inaccurately, call bike trails, which are used more by pedestrians and cyclists. Wherever these trails cross at a mid-block without a light, there is a real risk of danger to the users. This came to our...
Go ahead, proceed. The light was yellow when you started speaking. You've got about a minute and a half.
Okay. This came to a head with the Piedras Marcadas Trail. There were no safety provisions at all, a very busy street crossing, and this seems to be part of a general problem, that briefly stopping traffic is considered unacceptable, whereas the risk of killing pedestrians is okay. This arises wherever there's a major trail crossing, and there are quite a few in the city. The solution is to put the hawk lights or something similar to this, which developed in our nearby city of Tucson, by the traffic department there. This is a user-controlled light that actually stops the traffic and enables the pedestrian or cyclist to cross safely. It then turns flashing, and the traffic can resume as soon as the pedestrian is clear. There are some existing yellow flashing signs triggered by presence of a trail user at some crossings, but these just confuse people, because drivers don't know what to do. If they slow up, they'll probably get rear-ended, and they never stop, so it's totally ineffective. What we need is a red light that will actually stop traffic and enable someone to cross safely. So, I plead, I plead with you to push this idea at every possible opportunity, to get the traffic department to do what is needed, to come up with the funding for this, and to save lives. Albuquerque has about twice the rate of pedestrian fatalities as is the national average, and this is not something we should live with.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Nora Anaya, followed by Anita Cordova.
Good evening, council president, councilmen, women. I am so glad to be here again to actually thank you for making an effort to get the task force committee and OC-14-2, in my opinion, is at least a start to what we're going through right now. I just want you to think about this little personal thing that I contemplated. What about the people that have been shot that are innocent? I believe that those people need a voice, and those are the people that we are trying to help. There are people that just were at the wrong place at the wrong time, and that is a definite problem when they get shot just because they're in the wrong place. Most of all, I really feel strong about everything that has been going on, that at least they have people who are willing to speak up for them, and also you, and I thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anita Cordova, followed by Marcia Lueden, followed by Lisa Hubble, followed by Mike Alvarado. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Anita Cordova. I'm the director of development and planning and evaluation with Albuquerque Healthcare for the Homeless for the past eight years. I'm honored to serve in that role, and I'm here this evening to ask for your vote and approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Hubble, followed by Mike Alvarado, followed by Dee Ivy.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Lisa Lueden, following with the New Mexico Coalition to End Homelessness, represent about 20 organizations in Albuquerque that provide direct services to folks experiencing homelessness. I'm here tonight to talk about the 2015 capital improvement plan and to ask the council to consider prioritizing 5% of the available geo bond funds for workforce housing. It's hard to really overstate the impact that affordable housing has on people's lives, particularly low-income working families, people with disabilities, low-income senior citizens, and homeless veterans. I think, for those of you familiar with Albuquerque Heading Home, we're getting a glimpse of what affordable housing can do for folks that need it. Many of our Albuquerque Housing, Albuquerque Heading Home folks are really addressing underlying issues like substance abuse and mental illness, reconnecting with family, becoming productive, contributing members of their community again, and really, affordable housing is at the key of that, or at the, you know, at the core of that. But Albuquerque Heading Home is really just a first step. We've solved homelessness for about 300 folks, but as we know, there's many more folks who are experiencing homelessness or are risking homelessness in our community. And I feel like, as a community, we really have to figure out every opportunity that's available at the local level to invest in affordable housing. And setting aside 5% of our geo bond funds for workforce housing seems to me like a very moderate, reasonable strategy for investing in affordable housing in our community in a long-term sort of way, especially at a time where we are sustaining cuts at the federal level in affordable housing, and we really need to step forward as a local community to make up those cuts. So, I'd really like the council to consider setting aside 5% to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Alvarado, followed by Dee Ivy, followed by Kathy Lopez.
Hello, Mr. Sanchez. I just come here to, I'm a little puzzled. I've been here since 1977, and I've run into a lot of wonderful, good police officers in this town, and today, I'm afraid to even talk to any of them. You don't know if they're going to pull out a gun and shoot you just for saying hi. You know, the city needs a lot of development still. We're still way down on a lot of development that we need, new sewer lines, new water lines. The streets need to be paved. I talked to the mayor, and he said he don't got no money. Well, how are you going to have money if every lawsuit that we get hit with is 8 million bucks? You know, the police officers that need a raise, that need more insurance, how are you going to get it? Every time that we turn around, somebody gets a lawsuit because some guy is trigger happy. I don't know where these police officers get their training, but when I was young, police officers talked to you first, and if you had a knife in your hand, they used their nightstick. We didn't have, they didn't have no lasers back then. The lasers are just as potent as a nightstick or talk to you. Lot of times, when you talk to an individual, they understand what you're trying to tell them. We need to do something. Somebody needs to start doing something to get rid of these bad apples. We've got three police officers on the force that have caused a lawsuit three times in a row, and they still are in uniform. If I was to break the law, I'd be thrown in jail, and the key would be thrown away. And that is a fact. Lot of these officers that are beating their heads in, day in and day out on the street, with little paycheck, we're losing officers right and left to other states. I just can't understand it. I can't understand it. People are afraid to call the police because they're afraid of they're going to get shot. I have a friend of mine that her house was vandalized. They called the cops, and nothing got done.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dee Ivy, followed by Kathy Lopez, followed by Maria Moldean.
Good evening, council. My name's Dee Ivy. I'm a volunteer with Circle 10 New Mexico. I consider myself one of the fortunate ones in Albuquerque because I own my home, but I'm having trouble sleeping at night because there's so much poverty in our minutes. And many of my friends, like Rodrigo's family, are paying 50% of their income and more for housing, and it's not sustainable. They end up moving, they end up in shelters, they put a little money together, sleeping on couches, they get another apartment, make it work for three or four months, but 50, 60%, you can't maintain for long. I learned from the Greater Albuquerque Housing Partnership a few weeks ago that 53% of my neighbors of our community qualify, because the wages are so low, they qualify for rental assistance. So, like so many that have been up here tonight, I've come to ask you, to plead with you. I wrote you a letter last week, Mr. Sanchez, and copied you, to ask you, like others, to make affordable housing a priority until such time that we have more opportunity for people to work for a living wage. I beg you to prioritize affordable housing, if at all possible, and increase the maximum amount for the 2015 Workforce Housing Trust Fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Lopez, followed by Maria Moldean. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Kathy Lopez. I'm...
Hi, President Sanchez, city councilor. My name is Wade Patterson, and I am the executive director of Sawmill Community Land Trust. We're an affordable housing developer, provider, operating mainly north of the Old Town area. I am here, as with the others, speaking in support of a prioritization 5% of the general obligation bond for the 2015 cycle in support of the Workforce Housing Trust Fund. Fund, which has done tremendously well good in our city. I want to provide you with just a little bit more detail to complement what others have said. The main point I want to make is that household's, household income in Albuquerque is shrinking. The latest numbers for 2014 from Housing and Urban Development have downgraded the area median income for a household of four in Albuquerque from 62,900 in 2013 to 57,800 in 2014. 2008 was the last time we saw area median incomes this low. So, at the same time that these incomes are shrinking, housing costs are rising. Since 2000, the average median house price has risen 48%. Wages have risen 25%. So, you can see this gap widening, which doesn't only affect homeownership, but it also affects rental. Multifamily market rate apartment complexes last year in April revised down their rents 3% because the gap between what people are earning and what people can afford is continuing to widen. As others have mentioned, the Workforce Housing Trust Fund leverages money for every one city dollar to bring in at least four other city dollars. Last point I want to make is that our construction industry is still recovering. We have 31% fewer jobs than we had at the pre-recession peak, and these kinds of affordable housing projects really buoy the construction industry while we wait for the rest of the construction industry to rebound in our city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Last speaker will be Ken Balazsour.
Good evening, Mr. President. My name is Ken Balazsour, and I'm pleased to be here. I was a consultant to the City Council back in 2005, when the Workforce Housing Opportunity Act was presented and it was adopted.